We are back in open session. And we are going to be dealing with the things that we dealt with in closed sessions. So we'll just go through them. Item number 8.10, tax-supported operating budget recommendations. I need a mover and a seconder to table this to the next meeting. Moved by Counselor Jackson, seconded by Counselor Johnson. Brenda Johnson. All those in favor?
Carried.
Carried, thank you. Item number 12.2, potential impacts of service reductions, community and emergency services. I need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor Marula, seconded by Counselor Green. A, that report CES 17017 respecting the potential impacts of service reductions, community and emergency services be received. And B, that report CES 17017 respecting the potential impacts of service reductions, community and emergency services remain confidential. All those in favor?
Carried.
Carried, thank you. And item 12.3, I need a mover and seconder to table to the next budget date 2017 tax-supported operating budget reduction plan citywide. Moved by Counselor Brenda Johnson, seconded by Counselor Sam Marula. All those in favor?
Seconded.
Carried. And item 12.4, options for eight community halls, report number CES 17018 affects wards four, 11, 12, 14, and 15. Staff was provided direction in closed session. Sorry? Well, somebody is tinging and somebody put their hand up, so. Oh, okay. I need a mover and seconder. I need a mover and seconder, that the report CES 17018 respecting options for eight community halls remain confidential. Moved by Counselor Marula, seconded by Counselor Conley. All those in favor? Carried, thank you. Now, on item 7.2, which was on the agenda today for reference only, Mike Zagerich is going to speak to that.
So through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, just to help committee in terms of the referred items. So you'll recall, as it relates to council-referred and staff enhancements, as it relates to staff enhancements based on council's direction and council's target, we revised the staff-recommended enhancements, and there are no longer any staff-recommended enhancements. But there continue to be some council-referred items. So to help facilitate deliberations on the council-referred items, what I've suggested is we can work through the presentation one by one. And committee has options today. Your options are to approve, to remove, or to park. And by park is you would defer it to the next budget GIC. So again, if it's the will of committee, we can work through the presentation in order of the referred items, and committee has options to approve, remove, or park. So just in terms of, there are still 11 referred items. I believe two have been deferred. There was one that was approved yesterday. That was the public health naloxone that was approved through motion. So the first referred item would be the police services cost to support specialized by law enforcement unit.
Madam Chair, could we just have a quick update of why this is before us, just to remind everybody?
So through the chair, essentially this makes the pilot project that was started in 2015 a permanent project. So it was previously funded on a pilot basis off tax fee stabilization. When this enhancement was first before you, a couple of weeks back, it also included, the amount was higher. It was originally shown at $181,000 annualized. What we've done since then is we've removed the requirement for an additional City of Hamilton staff FTE, and we've reduced the requirement for funding for that FTE. We'll find that those costs in-house, what's remaining is the $83,000, which is the cost payable to police services for a police officer to support the program.
Okay. And if we could just have, again, a reminder of what the service was and why we even developed the pilot project? Or what the service is?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. The pilot project was a two-year pilot project to help reduce noise calls. And so if you recall, significant amount of noise calls were coming back to councils because the police were unable to get around to them. A noise call is a priority four call, and the police service was too busy to deal with it. There was a problem with municipal law enforcement because they didn't work past 1:00, and it wasn't, there was a counsel, or a consultant's report did not recommend that they work past 1:00. So the pilot project teamed up a police officer with a municipal law enforcement officer, and they ended up responding to all noise complaints throughout the entire city. And during those two years, an average year is 1,200 calls that they respond to. And they, by having the municipal law enforcement person there, they can track chronic problems and issue charges.
And if, I do recall, this was initiated in reaction to a significant amount of complaints that we were all receiving. And so as a result, the pilot project's now obviously been shifted to a permanent project. I'm prepared to support this to be included. But I don't want to be the only one to do this, because I have the Earth's Week that I want to include as well. So if somebody else can move this one. I know, but I'm kidding. I will move this, because it was originally an important project and one that I support to this day. So I'll move that we include it, and that's seconded by Counselor Farr.
Are we going to move them, are we going to move them each one as we go? Yes, okay. So moved by Counselor Sam Marula, seconded by Counselor Jason Farr, that we include number one, the police services cost to support specialized by law enforcement unit. Comment? Counselor Whitehead?
So I understand the importance of the service. What I would ask is, instead of approving something, well, we can certainly approve it in principle, but I wanted the opportunity to go back to the police services board to see if that charge back on the police officer cannot be absorbed within their budget.
Oh, that'd be great.
I don't think that's been asked of them directly through the board, and I want to be able to at least do that.
We've already asked them, but they said no to us, but if you're willing to try again?
Through the board, yes.
Yeah, let's do it through the board, that's great. So why don't we park this until we hear from Counselor Whitehead?
Yeah, so I want to make it clear, I support the intent of the program, the principle of the program. I'm not all that supportive of taking on the additional costs without turning every stone, so.
So we're going to wait for you to work your magic, Counselor Whitehead?
I'll try, thank you.
Wonderful, all right. So I'll move that we park it accordingly.
Okay, so move to park, so Counselor Marula, seconded by Counselor Farr, to park this until the next budget meeting. Counselor Farr?
When is the next police service meeting? Through you, Counselor Whitehead?
But it's before the next budget meeting?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
So considering that we cover, I mean, that's only the cost of one officer, we're covering the bulk of the costs minus the, well, all of the costs if we include the 83 as it stands, considering it's a very important community service, it really answers the late night hours, Thursday, Friday, Saturday call. It answers as well, which hasn't been touched on with the response from staff, the safety concerns of just sending municipal law enforcement officers, because they're escorted with police, they're working in tandem. At the very least, if they don't want to ante up on the entire, which they've already said, no, not through the service board, half even if we have to settle. But I'm glad you're bringing it up at that level, and I support the table.
So those are my only speakers. So moved by Counselor Marula, seconded by Counselor Farr to park it. All those in favor? Carried. So your, Counselor Marula is moving, and Counselor Green is seconding, killing, removing. Number two, discussion, Counselor Green.
I just, I don't want to use the term killing, Madam Deputy Mayor, because as I'm to understand and just to confirm, there's still $150,000 already allocated. There's an enhancement on top of that. Is that not correct for you to staff?
Mr. Thorne?
Through the chair, no. There was, originally the entire enhancement was $350,000. That was in front of council last year. 150 was approved. This is, so this is in addition to that. What these funds will be used for is for...
Just, if I could, sorry to interrupt, to pause there, 150 has already been approved.
Right now, we have an operating budget for the tourism work of $150,000, which covers some of the marketing programs and things that tourism does. This relates to the component of the work dealing with conference bids, convention building, those sorts of activities.
And you and I have had this conversation already offline, to give you my rationale with it. We're not killing the tourism department by any means. They're funded already, approved 150. This is an enhancement 200 on top of the work that the private sector has already undertaken to subsidize with a pseudo-taxation on visitors their own marketing expenses and budgets. So I'm fully comfortable not approving this enhancement, given the pressures that we're facing. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jackson?
Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor. If the motion by Counselor Marula and Green fails, I'd be prepared to move $100,000, if I could get a seconder, but that is, that will come after whether or not the Marula-Green motion fails or not. Madam Deputy Mayor, through you to General Manager Thorne. So Jason, how about, since we've been through hundreds of items in the last week or so, how about we quickly refresh our memory, the original $350,000 ask from a year ago, and why the ask? Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, please.
So through the chair, the $350,000 was identified to get the tourism budget up to, back up to where it was several years ago, when there were some additional sources of funding for that work. Since those provincial sources of funding were cut, we've been living off reserve. So the $150,000 last year allowed us to take functions such as the general marketing work that tourism Hamilton does to promote Hamilton, to take those functions off the reserve. What we're looking for with this component of the funding is, as I said, sort of convention building, doing bid incentive packages, that sort of work. Right now, we're still doing that off reserve. We have about $50,000 available through 2017, which really essentially takes us out of the game of chasing conferences and conventions for the city. And so this would allow us to, whether it's 200,000 or whether it's 100,000, that would essentially be our funds available to go after these sorts of conventions and events.
So thanks, Jason. So if I, if the original motion fails with 100,000, so if the 100,000 I move was successful, that would basically put you on a three-year plan, coming back next year with the request for the final 100,000, with at least 100,000 helping your staff and team securing more of the Junos, Vanier Cups, Country Music Awards you've just done, and building the visitor base to our, to our great city. Madam Deputy Mayor, through to Jason.
Through the chair, yes, it certainly would. The ultimate goal is to bring that fully up to the 350,000. But as I said, for 2017 without any enhancement, then we're dealing with about the 50,000 or so that we have left uncommitted in our existing reserves, and then we won't be able to chase any more additional conferences or events.
So thanks very much. And I'm, obviously I'm very cognizant of the fact of job losses, of additional job losses to come. So Madam Deputy Mayor, I'm very cognizant of that, but we've also got to continue the momentum of many people who want to come, explore, visit, spend money in our city. And we've got a merging arrangement, if you will, with the hospitality industry that's growing. So I've made my case in the past, I've stated it again today consistently. And so respectfully, I can't support the original motion, and if that fails, would you come back to me for my motion, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Maria Pearson?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and certainly appreciate the previous speaker, and I will, if the first motion fails, I'm very happy to second Counselor Jackson's motion. And as I spoke yesterday, and I appreciate Mr. Thorne has clarified, there's only $50,000 through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, remaining in this account. So we started out with, I think the balance was about 150, so would you say then the, is that not correct? Sorry.
So through the chair, we had, we had built up a reserve in previous years, so in 2015, we had about 400,000 in that reserve, but that's what we've been using as our, basically our operating funds for this work. So yeah, that's down to about 50,000 in terms of uncommitted dollars that's available for 2017.
Thank you. And how much did it cost to go after the Country Music Awards?
For the Country Music Awards, it was $750,000.
And for the Junos?
Through the chair, for the Junos, $250,000.
Thank you, appreciate that. And what we do is different than what the hotel, the hospitality industry pursues out there. It's not similar to what the city does. We're promoting the city and our facilities. Is that correct through you, Madam Deputy Mayor?
Through the chair, that's correct. And we're also able to leverage dollars. So to clarify, for the, for the Country Music Awards, 750 was the full cost, but not the full city cost. We were able to leverage other partners to contribute to that $750,000, just to clarify that. And so certainly what the hotel industry is talking about doing, about establishing their own fund, that's the exact kind of thing we would see doing when we chase, especially some of these larger events, that the city would have some money on the tables for the bid package and for the bid incentives. The industry would put some on this table, we'd look at sponsorships, those sorts of things, other partners in order to come up with, with the full, full cost for the bid package. But at the moment, right now, the city won't have dollars to put onto the table to match or leverage any of those additional dollars beyond what we have available in our current reserves.
Right, so we wouldn't even be able to sit at the table. So last question, what events do we have coming up in the hopper that we would like to be pursuing? Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. We have 14 bids that are currently submitted with dollars committed to them that are awaiting decision. We have five bids in process that will be submitted in this quarter.
Can you give us an idea of what the events are?
Certainly. They range dramatically, include sporting events as well as meetings and conventions, tournaments, that sort of thing. For example, we are, we have a bid in for a national Quidditch tournament. Our view of sport is very broad, and we're going after more than just the traditional sports to bring those audiences to Hamilton. That includes universities from across the country. We're looking forward to hopefully being successful in bringing that event to our city. Other ones, of course, is the Canadian Country Music Awards, which was announced in the last couple of weeks. We have also won a Canadian Association of Research Libraries Conference, a Quest basketball tournament. We have Canadian University and College Conference Organizers Associations, their annual conference as well, has been confirmed in the last few weeks. And a national training program for Badminton.
Super, thank you very much for that. And these may not be as highlighted as the Country Music Awards and the Junos, but those were excellent events. And we all know, Madam Deputy Mayor, what these events do for the city and the spinoffs, that it assists in our business, is not just hotel room accommodations, but the restaurant industry, and certainly other facilities, or museums, or stores, et cetera, throughout the whole city. So it's, I firmly believe that we need to continue to support this. I think that we'll be putting Hamilton backwards if we don't, and it certainly would create a shift or a space in that continuity of being out there and making sure that Hamilton's moving forward. So we'll see where the first motion goes, but I certainly support some contribution at this time for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Whitehead?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I am looking at this from a broad perspective. This council endorsed the music, the music strategy. This council supported the sports strategy, as a sports center and a music center. And part of the ancillary responsibilities and the foundation is to ensure that we support those mechanisms that further enhance, highlight, profile these very issues that this council's endorsed. Tying one hand behind the back and not providing this foundational support is concerning to me. So when I look at the fact that COPS Coliseum, Iverwin Stadium, Convention Center, Twin Pad, Quad Pad, Morgan Firestone, the new one in Flamborough, are all part of the facilities that we own. And anything we bring in in regards to significant tournaments and activities or sports do two things. One, they help offset the cost ultimately to the city and the taxpayers of this community. Two, they're bringing people in that are spending money and discovering Hamilton, and God knows what benefits come out of that. So, and then I look at the fact that we're funding, you know, Supercrawl, $80,000, you know, it's a weekend event. I support it, but the principle doesn't change. So I, I find it hard to believe that we want to bankrupt the marketing strategy to pursue bids when entire, our staff's hands behind their back and further erode our profile. And not only that, I mean, a lot of our youth, and role modeling and that, a lot of these big activities, as a result of some of them, clearly have an impact on our community well after they've left. So I, I find it hard pressed to eliminate all the dollars and rely on reserves. And we already know there's only 50,000 left in the reserve. I am 100% supportive of Counselor Jackson's move. You know, I love to support the full amount. I don't think the desire is here, and I know there's a real pressure, and you know, we have cut deep in regards to even laying off staff. So I have to be cognizant of the fact that I got to take an even approach right across the board to show that we are serious about getting this budget to the, close to the targets we can. And for those reasons, I won't support 200,000, but I certainly would support 100,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Farr?
Through you, to Mike or Jason, what's left in our economic development reserve at this point?
I think it was in the range of about a million remaining in that reserve, but I'd have to go back with Mike and actually check and confirm that amount.
Would you suggest, hearing some of the arguments and given the strategy, and I'm fully in compliance and appreciate those arguments, that we shouldn't be bankrupting a tourism strategy? But would you, would you agree that the strategy directly correlates to, to Counselor Pearson's points, to economic benefit spinoff, economic, economic spinoff per each event? That there is a direct correlation to economic development when we talk about the tourism strategy?
Through the chair, I certainly would. I mean, the, although I would remind council that when we brought forward the Economic Development Action Plan late last year, we brought it forward without any financial impact. And the reason for bringing, one of the reasons for bringing forward without any financial impact is we are anticipating that the costs associated with implementation of that plan would be done through the Economic Development Reserve, and these costs were not anticipated as part of that. We anticipate these as ongoing annual operating costs, which is the kind of thing we've been trying to, we've essentially drained one reserve over the last couple of years chasing this kind of work. So it's certainly not staff's recommendation that we move that into another reserve, but we'd be at the will of council.
Right, and I would be taking it out of staff's hands and maybe pursuing it from the Economic Development Reserve. What commitments have we made out of the Economic Development Reserve regarding the Economic Development Action Plan, monetarily speaking, through you, Chair? Of the 1 million that currently sits in the reserve, how much is dedicated to the Economic Development Action Plan?
So through the chair, we haven't fully budgeted that yet, but certainly we've been looking at a couple of sectoral strategies being funded through that. We have a commitment already to pursue a fashion incubator program that's been earmarked for that, that fund. Those are the ones that are coming off, oh, I have a list here, okay. That's also the fund through which we support the, support for, in the past, we've supported for Supercrawl, we've supported some of the, our sponsorship and partnership with the Innovation Factory has been supported through that reserve as well.
No, but I don't think Supercrawl is supported by the Economic Development Reserve anymore. Through you, Chair?
That's correct. So I said through, historically, that was one of the programs that was funded through that reserve.
So Jay, I don't mean to put you on the spot, through you, Chair, you don't have an actual definitive number of exactly how much we've got devoted from the Economic Development Reserve that currently sits at $1 million toward the Economic Development Action Plan. You can't say 400, 200, 1, 1,000, 1 million at this point?
So through the chair, no, I couldn't give a precise amount.
This 200K before us, that's a one-time, as I recall from the delegations, that's a one-time shot, the 200K, or is that, would that be annualized?
So through the chair, this is annualized. This would go into, this would be the operating budget available to the tourism office to pursue these events. This is separate from what the industry had been in to speak about, which was the potential for them to actually raise their own source of funds, that on a go-forward basis, we could leverage with the funds available in the tourism office.
So, Madam Chair, as we did with item one, maybe if Jay could get back to us, and you could obviously see where I'm going, and if council has the appetite, if there's an opportunity this time around, given the constraints and the work still to do, to maybe share a piece of this 200K funding from the Economic Development Reserve, then maybe we could discuss that. But we can't discuss that until we know exactly what commitments we're making from that million-dollar reserve towards the Economic Development Action Plan. And I'm sure, Jay, through you, Chair, you could get that information to us before our next budget meeting? If we want to entertain the idea?
So through the chair, yes, I could.
So maybe if it's 100K, if we don't go with the motion that's on the floor, and it's 100K from the levy, the other 100K could possibly be deliberated through that reserve, but I'll listen to what others have to say as well. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you. So I do have a couple more speakers, but I would like to take just a minute to recognize former Ward Nine Counselor and MPP for Brad Clark, who is in the audience today because he missed doing budgets. Welcome. Okay, so the next speaker is Counselor Green.
Thank you very much. So I don't know that anybody's talking about bankrupting tourism. Tourism is funded at $150,000. We've heard around the table about council-supported initiatives, a long list. We supported a 10-year transit strategy that was deferred. Why can't this be deferred and some of the other enhancements that are put forward? Budgets are about priorities, and so it's very difficult for me to hear that, you know, two events, you know, we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, and yet in other conversations, we're talking about core business. And, you know, I hear something that kind of tweaked my interest. I'm curious to know, out of the ECDEV reserve, how much was that fashion incubator?
Through the chair, I believe we earmarked about $50,000 for the feasibility study and business plan. That was a report that was before council last fall, I believe.
I must have missed my radar, because I keep hearing people talking about core business and being fiscally responsible, and any time that, you know, initiatives are brought forward, we talk about using area rating and other things. So I'll be very interested to see where that $50,000 consultant's feasibility report goes. But we're looking at all these items here, and some of them are material, some of them are not. You know, I have a very hard time with this. I have a very hard time with the fact that we have, we have a group like Carmen's who has a convention center. We have a group like Live Nation, both of them, when they came to council to get those contracts, pitched us in good faith that they'd be bringing in these events. That was their responsibility as a private sector, to bring in all these events. And that's why we approved to have them license our facilities, and yet I'm not clear where Live Nation or Carmen's is bringing in these big events and conventions and conferences. That is their responsibility. So we, you know, we subsidize the development of the hotels and other things through DC charges removed. We, you know, subsidize in some, in some aspects, the privatization of public goods to have corporations come in and take them over. Fair enough. They said they got a sound business plan that's going to bring in lots of events and business. Fair enough. And yet here we are, talking about doubling down and taking on the bulk of their work. That's not to say that we shouldn't be having a fulsome tourism strategy. not to say that we shouldn't be having a fulsome tourism strategy. I've heard right now, Madam Deputy Mayor, through you, just to confirm, 14 events online, a few others. If we're going to present an austerity budget, fair enough, but why can't we just defer this? I'm not saying kill it, just defer it to next year, like we have with some of our other priorities, because when you look at our strategic plan, the other priorities that we've deferred, at least in my recollection, have ranked higher than chasing after events on behalf of private corporations. So, I cannot support this in any way, shape, or form, nor can I support it going into a tax stabilization reserve. You know, we have other items down the list that I personally, in my own personal priorities, have prioritized as higher in terms of allowing people to have dignified, you know, decent-paying jobs. And so, I can't support this, and I'm challenged to hear a little bit of the contradictions around, you know, what our core businesses are, fiscal responsibility, you know, tightening our belt, and yet here we are as an enhancement. Yeah, I just, I'm just not there, and I can't, I can't figure it out for the life of me. Those are my opinions, and we'll see where it goes, but I'll certainly be voting strongly against this.
Counsel Scully.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason, what is the budget, sorry, not the budget, but how much did the city actually put towards, through the chair, the country music bid?
Through you, Madam Chair. Counsel approved 250,000 towards the bid, and from the Economic Development Reserve, another 100,000 was contributed. We were able to leverage 300,000 from the Province of Ontario through a blockbuster grant, and the RTO III contributed 100,000.
Thank you. Through the chair, what does that money go towards? What does it actually do?
That is the bid fee that is required to secure bringing the event to Hamilton, and it goes to the Canadian Country Music Association.
Thank you. So, when you bid for it, the higher the bid, obviously, the greater the chances of getting, getting the project. Is that how it works? Or is there an automatic fee, and they just look at, sorry, is there an automatic fee, or do we bid, the highest bid gets the event?
Through you, Madam Chair. The RFP would specify a bid fee.
I see. Thank you. Jason, how much is, is the economic development budget annually? Through the chair, please.
Through the chair, for the entire Division 6.2?
Million. Through the chair, we've heard throughout this process, we've been very fortunate to have keen, experienced members of our senior management team go back and look at where they can find savings. I'm just wondering, is there any way you could perhaps find this money in that, what did you say, it was 6.2? Somewhere there that you could cover the cost, even 100,000 for tourism?
Through the chair, if that's the direction of Counsel, we'd certainly look. I can tell you, that's an exercise that we've gone through in the department with a reasonably fine, fine-tooth comb. And I haven't identified where we can identify 200,000 in operating costs to divert to this program. Most of those costs, most of that 6.2 million, that was the Economic Development Division budget, that's mostly into salaries and not into sort of program operating costs like this. But it'd be at the will of Counsel. If that's what the direction is, then we would certainly look at what we would be able to do.
Thank you. Through the chair, but there is a salary attached to this as well, is there not?
Through the chair, no. This would be direct cost for, so to go directly into bid incentives, bid packages, the staff's already in place to do this work. This would be their, the budget they would then have to work with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And second time speaker, Counsel Whitehead.
Thank you, and I'm glad you recognized Counsel Clark, because I believe it's Counsel Clark, and I believe Counsel Collins that led on the charge of sustainability in regards to our reserves, and ensure that we create a sustainable plan and don't use annualized expenditures and continue reaping that off the reserve. So, that's important in the context of this discussion. Second piece, we fund tragically hip in a park, we try movies in the night in parks. So, it's all area rate of money. So, the issue for me is, I'm not being negative on it. I think those are good things. I want to be clear. I think it's a good thing that we have Supercrawl. I think it's a good thing we have Peach Festival. I think it's a good thing that we have Festival Friends. But we made those commitments, and it's been an annualized commitment, and we recognize the benefit of this community for those particular programs. When I take a look at the fact that our major facilities, our COPS Coliseum, Iverwin Stadium, Convention Center, those are our facilities, and better those operators do, the better we do, because we get rewarded. Can I ask, through, I don't know who can answer this question, but do we have not an arrangement for continued savings with those operators when they're identified through activity?
Through you, Madam Chair. We have a very close working relationship with the hotel industry. We call them Team Hamilton, and we meet on a regular basis. They give us very preferred pricing when we are bidding on events, and they have been extremely good partners with the city in order to secure tourism business for us.
I was talking about the activity level that takes place, for example, at Convention Center or at the COPS Coliseum. More active it is, the more people coming in, is there any correlation in regards to the subsidy that we currently provide for that facility?
So, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, there is a provision in the contract where there is profit sharing, and I don't recall the exact threshold, but again, there is a provision in the contract that provides for profit sharing between those entities and the city.
So, by helping and partnering and facilitating, at the end of the day, the taxpayers of this community are rewarded, and this is a revenue generator. This is not some of the issues that have been identified in earlier discussions. And one of the challenges we've said, and I know that a number of Counselors raised, is one of our challenges is revenue. And so, when you can take a small amount of money and get sponsorships and expand that envelope and secure major events like the June Awards, the Country Awards, you know, a major curling sponsor, there's major Canadian skating championships and all those kinds of activities, it does two things. Not only is it filling the place and rewarding all the ancillary businesses, but it's also, and I believe, for that figure skater to have an opportunity in Hamilton to go and take a look at the elite level here in Hamilton is also an inspiration for many of the youth in our community, whether it's a basketball tournament, same thing. So, I see a social benefit, I see a revenue generation benefit, and here's the question I'm going to ask. How many cities with major venues do not have funds to go after bids?
Through you, Madam Chair. I, I'm at a loss to give you a number on other cities, but we certainly know from our colleagues in other municipalities who our competitors are, and they have dollars available on the table.
Again, I don't think because we hired operators to take on some of our major facilities, that we were now foregoing our responsibility and our partnership in respect to continuing the role of facilitating major events in the City of Hamilton. And I want to go back to the core issue that I identified earlier, because I think it's important. When we established the music office and when we, and the music strategy, and we established the sports strategy, attracting major sporting events to this community, or major music events to this community, and facilitating the growth of those kinds of industries in our city, it wasn't by accident. And this Counsel unanimously supported both those positions. This is yet another tool, as I said earlier, and I don't hate repeating myself, no, I don't, I like repeating myself. Well, like Churchill said, you've got a message, you keep pounding it, so I am. I believe that, I wish I could give the 200,000, but understanding the pressures, this is revenue generating. It's not the same as the analogy that was put forward earlier, and I would support the 100,000 for the reasons I espouse. Thank you.
Thank you. That was my last speaker on the list. Anyone else have a comment? So, at the moment, we have a motion on the floor, moved by Counsel Marula, seconded by Counsel Green, to remove number two, the tourism strategy of 200,000 from the list. All those in favor? Any opposed? So, did it pass or not? Okay. So, do you want, you want us to put our hands up again? So, let's see those opposed. Counsel Pearson? Oh, I'll have to do it again? Oh, those in favor? We're voting on removing number two, tourism strategy, 200,000. And those opposed? And those opposed?
It was definitely defeated.
Yes, okay, so it failed. So, now I have, I have heard that I have a motion on the floor by Counselor Tom Jackson, seconded by Maria Pearson, to fund 100,000 of that straight up, just like that, to approve 100,000 instead of 200, 100,000. All of those in favor? Standing, recorded vote. All of those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Counsel Farr, you wanted to make a comment?
Could I still have our general manager at our next budget meeting report back on how much is allocated for the Economic Development Action Plan in the current 1 million economic Development Reserve?
And so, staff can take that as direction? It's taken as direction. Okay. Number three. Counselor Marula?
I'd like to move, I'd like to move that we, I'd like to move that we include the 25,000 because of the tangible, because of the tangible benefits we've already received from this, particularly last year, which we truly had a tangible return on our investment to explore, to come, to visit the city, and they've also, they've also tied into all of, all of the BIAs in town, the downtowns of the town, including those that are on the outskirts, to ensure that we provide a mechanism for tourism that's much cheaper, that's much cheaper than the 200,000. This is a standalone effort, and the return on investment is much greater and more tangible, and the proof is in the track record of last year. So, having said that, it's moved by myself and seconded by the big money spender, Jason Farr, that we, that we actually restore this. Standing, recorded vote.
Do we have staff just respond to what the Arts Week is about? Apparently everyone forgot about it. So, if we can have staff just give a presentation on the Arts Week?
No, I have, let's have a speaker first. Counsel Johnson.
Yep, thank you. And I'm not saying I approve or not to approve, but when I read the heading of this, it sounds very familiar to the other arts that we contribute through the grant process, and this year was 300,000, because we committed to a long term to donate to the arts. So, my question is, why is it here and not at grants? So, it's an enhancement for arts, and yet we've got a complete comprehensive arts program that's been set up at grants that Counsel Marula and I are both a part of. So, would it not make more sense to direct this to the grant program, and it gets approved through that process where I think it needs to go?
Jason?
So, through the chair, this would be, so this was done, again, on a pilot basis last year, and it's associated with the City of Hamilton's Arts Week. So, it's a City of Hamilton event, and this would be a City of Hamilton Arts Week to go along with the City of Hamilton Arts Awards events. We, last year was delivered through a delivery partner in terms of the Arts Council, but it would be, but it is intended as a city event, and like some other city events, we look at whether or not we can actually, rather than delivering them in-house with city staff, we actually have a outside agency partner who does some of the implementation. So, this is not a grant application from the Arts Council. This is the city seeking funding to have a regular Arts Week associated with the Arts Awards. How we approached it last year was to contract out to the Arts Council to deliver it, but it wasn't done as a grant application coming forward from any particular organization.
Okay, thanks for that, Jason, and through you to Jason. So, am I to read this, from what I heard from your response, is this enhancement now going to come back in perpetuity? Because it's, the Arts Week will always be there, because you've set it up so lovely, the whole staff. So, where, when does, maybe it's a broader question, when do these yearly, you know, handout, or my hands out, and I gotta, I gotta enhance something that really should be in the budget, or is there a way we can funnel it through the grants process, through the Arts Council, because they're the very people that have been doing all the judging? And so, this is where my question is, because, you know, the good Counsel shouldn't be sitting here trying to pitch it when it could actually be going through another direction.
Yes, so through the chair, so this would become an annualized enhancement, so it would be within the division's operating budget each year, and it would become then an annual event, much like some of the other annualized events we deliver, whether it's Canada Day, Remembrance Day, those, the costs for those are all incorporated within the division's operating budget. So, this would be treated much the same. This would become a regularly supported annual city event. Like I said, last year, it was delivered in partnership with the Arts Council. That's not to suggest that they would always be the implementing partner, but this was one event that we looked at contracting out in terms of the event coordination.
Okay, thank you for that. And not to belabor this, but if, this is something that's been set up by the staff, and it's something that you know is going to be coming every single year, why is it not then incorporated into your operating, but that's not what I heard, so I just want to clarify. So, why has this not been incorporated into your operating event?
So, through the chair, so that is what this is, is to incorporate this within the operating budget. Because this is a service that was not previously within the division's operating budget, we felt that it should be recognized as an enhanced level of service, as an enhanced event that didn't exist in the past, that we'd be looking to incorporate into our, into our budget on an ongoing basis.
So, next year, we won't be seeing this as an enhancement if it's incorporated into the, okay. So, then can I just make a friendly suggestion? Is that we've just heard how much the reserve is, why can we not take it out of the reserve, it's a one-time thing, and then go forward with the operating after? Yeah, well, but it keeps coming here.
Yeah, so through the chair, when this was, when this went before Counsel last spring, that that's what the direction was, was to basically fund it out of departmental surplus, and if that wasn't sufficient, to fund it out of the tax fee stabilization reserve, and then to bring it back to this project, to this budget process for permanent funding. So, if it's Counsel's direction to fund this from another year out of reserves, that's what we'd have to do, and then it would be back in front of you again next year to become part of the operating budget.
Okay, so just again, it's on process. So, if we, if we say, okay, take it out of reserves again, it again, it has to come back here next year? Can it not be with the direction of take it out of reserves this year and it to be into the operating budget next year? Why can't that happen?
So, through the chair, I could defer to Mike on that question, but I don't think council's able to approve an operating budget increase to the 2018 budget in this budget process.
Okay, so, Mike, just if you want to hear the question again. This has come now forward to us, this is the second year in a row. Last year, it was funded out of the reserve, and now it's in front of us again, with the understanding next year it should be incorporated into the operating budget for next year. Can we not give direction that if it comes out of the reserve this year, we're directing staff now to incorporate it into the operating budget, no longer being an enhancement? They'll just have to find the $25,000 in their budget?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, you're effectively directing the department to absorb it. So, whether you direct the department to absorb it in 2017 or 18, you're effectively through that motion. If you're funding it from reserve in 17 and directing the department to absorb it in 2018, that's effectively, I think, what the council is suggesting.
Is what we're saying, is just to absorb it. But my understanding, if I just want to go back to Jason again, because I want to put you, I just want to ask you again, you're saying is that the intent is to put it into the operation budget for next year, so in essence, absorb it into your operating budget for next year, correct? Did I hear that properly?
Through the chair, no. So, the enhancement here would then, with the enhancement, yes, with the enhancement, then that $25,000 would go into our 2017 operating budget, and we would deliver the program year after year, and the enhancement wouldn't come back. We'd have that $25,000 in our base budget year after year after year to deliver the program.
Okay, so then again, can we not just direct you to take it and absorb it, take it out of reserves this year, but absorb it continuing on?
So, through the chair, if we're directed to absorb it without any corresponding increase in our operating budget, then we'd be absorbing that at the expense of some other program that we're delivering within the division.
And through you, Chair, with all due respect, if it was next year, you would be doing that very thing, because your intent was to keep it, was to put it into operations for next year? Or is next year, we're going to have the same enhancement in front of us?
So, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, the intent of the recommendation is to establish $25,000 of new net funding into the planning and ECTAV budget, so the base would be there in perpetuity. So, the alternative that the council has put forward is funded from 2017 from reserve, and for the department to absorb it. So, as Jason's identified, it may impact in terms of effects in other service areas.
Because this is going on the levy now?
Right.
And you want to reflect that going forward?
So, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, why it may affect other service areas is you're paying for it from a bank account this year, but to absorb it into the department now means he has a $25,000 pressure, so he has to look across all his various accounts to see whether or not he can reduce the other accounts to absorb the $25,000 in 2018.
Okay, thanks for those answers.
Thank you. Councilor Pearson?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. A few of my questions have been answered, but I just want to ask, so the $25,000 contribution, what is it exactly that the city does? How many are involved, staffing, et cetera? Do we have sort of a layout of that information?
So, through the chair, so the $25,000 is to run the, is to create brand market and run an Arts Week, and it's done in tandem with the annual Arts Awards. So, this was something that was introduced in 2016 to create a whole week of activities instead of just the one evening of Arts Awards. So, in 2016, that includes, so it includes marketing dollars, it includes promotion. There were, we were able to leverage, there's about 100 different sort of little events, local events, that happened in association with Arts Week in 2016. So, this work helps to coordinate some of those activities to extend the Arts Awards evening into a full week of activities across the city.
And this enhances and assists local artists throughout all of Hamilton and invites artists from outside of the community to come into Hamilton?
Through the chair, yes. That's the intent, is to take something that was just an evening event and turn it into multiple events in multiple parts of the city, some for local artists, some drawing for artists from the outside.
Okay. Would this be similar, Mr. Thorne, to, and I don't think we do it every year, it's every other year, the planning and economic development, the awards, design awards? Is that a similar sort of program?
So, through the chair, yes, in terms of the awards component. So, what we're trying to do with this event is, with the Urban Design Awards, is just a one-time deal, it's one event, and what was done last year was to try to extend that into a week-long worth of events and activities. So, that's the service enhancement that comes through this funding.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Whitehead?
Can I ask, because I'm having a bit of trouble understanding, that we just had a Tourism Culture Budget Discussion, and we identified the $200,000, $100,000 going towards sort of bid-type stuff, but we identified the current dollars in that envelope, the $150,000 that's currently in there, was a part of doing these kinds of things. So, help me reconcile the fact that we got $150,000 over here that was meant to do exactly what you're asking for, for the $25,000.
So, through the chair, they're distinct and discrete activities. So, the tourism funding under item number two is to do bid development, bid incentives for attracting comprehensive events to the city. This is related to the division's events programs. So, as council will know, the city runs a number of our own events, Canada Day, Remembrance Day as two examples. One of those events has historically been the annual Arts Awards, which was done at, I couldn't give you a precise amount, but generally nominal cost for a single evening event. What this enhancement relates to, which was what was done in 2016, what is to extend that to a full week-long of activity. So, this is part of the division's work to implement and develop specific community events. It's not about attracting an external event, an external conference or convention on a one-time basis to come to the city.
Well, again, because in that conversation, we had distinguished two parts of that account. One was for going after bids, but I understand the other part of that account was to promote. Arts Week, awareness, promotion, would that not fit that envelope?
So, through the chair, in terms of general tourism marketing, which is sort of generally selling the city and doing our social media and web-based marketing of tourism in the city, certainly some of that would benefit an Arts Week or an Arts event. This is significantly more than that. This is actually having a group who can then coordinate all the different, first of all, create the different activities that happen throughout the week and coordinate those activities across the city. So, this goes beyond just sort of general tourism promotion of Hamilton.
Appreciate it. Now, help me understand, and this is the concern I have, every time you take another project that's not a core function of the city, and you plug it into our annualized budget, then that creates ongoing pressures on our budget. So, we continue to expand beyond our core responsibility and build it into our annual budget. So, I guess my concern is, and then what happens, is that pressure results from them coming back, is you know what, $25,000 is no longer going to do the trick, we need $50,000, and then, as it has happened in some of those other areas. And then, all of a sudden, we got even greater and greater. So, once you start something, once you give that foothold, then you lose control of how you manage it financially. So, I support the principle. I guess my concern is, how do I ensure the taxpayers, sort of that I represent, that we're not going to see next year, the year after, or the year after, staff coming back and asking for more than the $25,000 you're identifying here?
So, through the chair, what I can tell you is $25,000 is what we identified as an appropriate cost for the events and activities. We were able to test that last year in terms of what was required to do the event last year, and there's no intent to expand that or grow that. And if that were to happen, it would have to happen through another enhancement process, which would have myself right here in front of you with a budget amount in front of you for additional funds, but that's certainly not the intention of staff.
So, we understand the next three years, according to Mike Ziegler, are going to be very, very tough years on budgets. What guarantee do I have, or can I get, or can we build it in, that there will not be any increases to this particular aligned budget for the next three years?
So, through the chair, I can tell you what we would have budgeted in the division's budget is $25,000, and we would not be intending to go over that in terms of incurring additional costs for this event. So, that's what the commitment would be. If there's council direction to expand this into a month-long event with additional activities, that would have to come back in front of council for additional funding.
Fair enough. I just want to have you on record as indicating that there is no planned strategy to expand beyond the $25,000 that's being asked here today.
Yes, through the chair, there is not.
Thank you. And I want to thank Councilor Marula. It was nice to hear him echo a lot of the same arguments we had in the debate earlier in justifying this expenditure, and I absolutely agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Skelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there someone through the chair that can expand on the $25,000? Is this so that the city is hosting arts-related events, so we become the host? Or is it coordinating, or is it marketing?
So, through the chair, it would essentially be all of those things. This would be a City of Hamilton Arts Week. This is not about, you know, providing a grant out to a third-party entity to run their own program. So, this would be a City of Hamilton Arts Week to coincide with the City of Hamilton Arts Awards. So, the work that was done last year included marketing and branding that as an Arts Week. It included coordinating with a number of different stakeholders in the arts community to have different events in venues across the city. Those included music events, those included gallery events, it included a launch event, and then includes having marketing happening for the week outside of the City of Hamilton as well, so we can try to attract some other artists and patrons into the city for that week. So, it includes both development of the programming, marketing of the programming, and coordination of events.
Thank you. Again, it's $25,000. You've got a budget of $6 million-plus. Can you not eat this? It's $25,000. I mean, either it comes out of the arts budget, or it comes out of ECTAV, but to separate it, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I don't think we should be putting on anything on our own. I can see coordinating and marketing, but artists are best doing, let the artists host the events. And... But I think that this is, you know, $25,000. We've had departments find greater savings in the last 24 hours. Can you not find $25,000 in your existing budget, knowing the enormous pressures that we're facing?
So, through the chair, I can say that would be difficult. I think one of the concerns we have, and particularly have in this area of our business, is that there are a number of events that we, as a city, host, and as we're taking on additional events, we do need to take on additional resources to deliver those events. This is a very stretched program and stretched team. It is, for example, why when one-off events come in front of this council, we do seek separate funding for those additional one-off events. So, the tragically hip one was an example from last year, where we sought separate funding to host a one-off event, because there's costs that come with those things. And if we don't have the operating funds to support them, then they do just create pressures within the budget. So, we're already delivering a number of events as the city, and we know from last year, this was an additional cost to deliver this program. And the recommendations out in front of council is if this is to continue as a full week of activities, it requires special coordination and marketing, and there is a cost associated with that that we don't have available within our existing budget.
Sorry. Oh, sorry. I guess my issue is, again, it's $25,000. I would, my message going back would be, I would hope you could find that money within the budget, and that's, I don't want to see it canceled, but again, you know, you've got a huge budget, and we have to prioritize, and if this is a priority, I'd like you to be able to find it within your existing budget. Thank you.
Thank you. That was my last speaker. So, we have a motion on the floor, moved by Councilor Marula, seconded by Councilor Farr, that number three, the annual Arts Week implementation be approved. All those in favor, please rise.
Councilor Vanderby, can I ask that you read up the names for me?
Sorry?
So, I can write them down?
So, in favor, Councilor Pearson, Councilor Jackson, Councilor Whitehead, myself, Councilor Collins, Councilor Marula, Councilor Green, Councilor Farr, Councilor Aidan Johnson. All those opposed? Councilor Conley, Councilor Brenda Johnson, Councilor Skelly. It carries. So, we'll move on to number four, which is Long Range Planning Office. It's been deferred. Number five?
Yeah, so, through you, Madam?
It's been deferred. Number six?
Nope, nope, sorry. Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, with respect to item five, it was moved, a motion was approved. So, with respect to the naloxone, it was approved at $69,080 and .7 of an FTE. So, that was approved yesterday.
Okay, great. I was just going by the list, sorry. Number six, Hamilton Roundtable for Poverty Reduction, zero. Moved to receive. Moved by Councilor Jackson, seconded by Councilor Pearson. All those in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Number seven, Spray Pad. Moved by, Spray Pad Operating Season Review, moved by Councilor Collins, seconded by Councilor Pearson. We take no action on this. Councilor Johnson, please.
Yeah, and last summer, or actually, last June really comes May, it was, that really comes to mind, that the kids were outside, it was 90 degrees out, they couldn't play in the splash pads. So, our summers are getting longer. I think it's a reality. I would support this one. This is a service that the residents will see, and the residents will appreciate, in my opinion, because that's the ones, some areas, that's the only service they see anyways that the City of Hamilton provides. I would support this for the very reason that our summers are getting longer, they're coming earlier, and I think it was the second week of May, we were asking, when do those splash pads open? So, I would support this one.
Councilor Jackson, please.
Thank you, thank you very much, Madam Deputy Mayor. Can I have a refresher here, please? Dan, are you prepared to give a refresher on this? What is the current window of operation of our spray pads currently within current budget? If memory serves me right, it might be mid-June to mid-September, but maybe you could just confirm for me, Madam Deputy Mayor, through you to Dan, if he's got this information in front of him, please.
Dan?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. The current program sees the spray pads opening on June 20, shortly after school finishes. So, the enhancement before you is to activate the spray pads the last week of May, or subject to a Stage 1 heat advisory, whichever is earlier. But I think the information before you is predicated on the last week of May.
And how about the concluding end of the season, Dan, please? I thought it was maybe just past Labor Day, but I could be wrong. If you have that in front of you as well, just so we understand the window. So, typically, June 20, you said, if it went to even mid-September, that would be July 20. So, that's about a three-month window, and this would add about two, three weeks at the beginning of the season. And how about at the end there, Dan? Madam Deputy Mayor, through you, please.
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I apologize. I don't see what the extension would be at the end. I think this is only the start earlier.
Oh, just for the start, okay. And I thought it was Councilor Marula, to his credit, that actually brought this forward to explore it. To, no, no, no. Madam Deputy Mayor, I was giving Councilor Marula a compliment, but do I still have the floor, please?
You still have the floor.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. So, Dan, if we were to approve this, but we had a typical summer of years gone by, and the warm weather didn't come till the normal second, third week of June, you don't turn the taps on in spite of this amount being approved, and hence, you would save this amount if we didn't have a hot early summer? summer? Madam Deputy Mayor, through you to Dan, so I can understand operationally.
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Yeah, that would be correct. I think the direction we would take from this is we'd have the budget to do it if it was necessary, but if we didn't have a Stage 1 alert, we wouldn't do it. Although, we would, no, forgive me, we would do it at the end of May. So we could change the direction so that we could set the threshold as just a Stage 1 alert, if that's what you're thinking.
I guess you'd have to collaborate with the Medical Officer of Health on that one in terms of the heat alert and that. Because I'd like to approve, my point being, and I apologize, I'm not the Medical Officer of Health, or you're the General Manager of Public Works, I would like to support approving this, but again, not that the money would be there and evaporate in the budget, but we had a normal type of summer of years gone by where it didn't really get hot till near the end of June, and hence you would save this money. But if it got very hot, like the last couple of summers, starting in just after Victoria Day weekend, then the money's been approved, and you could use it, Dan. So, Madam Deputy Mayor, through you to Dan, maybe further comment, please.
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Mike's just sharing with me the actual council report. In the last six years, we only experienced a Stage 1 heat alert earlier than the end of May on one occasion. So the direction we could take is that we would only activate either one or the other, the last week of May, or a Stage 1 heat alert, and if that's the will of council.
Okay, Dan. So, on behalf of the multitude of children in this community, Madam Deputy Mayor, that I strongly support with their families, if the original motion fails to not include the extension of time, then I'd be happily to move this item. I'd be happy... Madam Deputy Mayor, do I have the floor? Thank you.
Take the floor.
I would be happy to move this with the caveat and condition that the General Manager of Public Works, in consultation with the MOH, said about category 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Scully, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Clarification, if, at this point, it's June 1 through the beginning of September, is that correct? June 20th. And historically, we have not had severe heat warnings, extreme heat warnings, prior to June 20th, historically. Is that correct, Doctor?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Just referencing the report here, there's three occasions, June 18th, June 19th, and May 30th, in the last six years where, otherwise, we would have been opening the pads on June 20th. But there was three occasions in the last five years where a Stage 1 heat alert was prior to June 20th.
Thank you. Thank you. Through the chair. Doctor, would you suggest that the big concern is the summer, June, end of June, July, August?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. In fact, I would suggest the opposite, that the big concern is actually at the beginning of the summer. By the time you get to the end of the summer, you've actually acclimated a fair amount to the temperature, and so you're actually more able to deal with the heat alerts as the summer progresses. So the beginning of the summer in that transition, and when you're having up and down greater variability, that's actually the more important time.
Thank you. Through the chair. I think that that's very important to know, and I worry that there's nothing worse than sitting with all of our spray pads not in operation, and we're in the middle of an extreme heat warning. And could the city react, or how quickly can the city react, if we have a cold spring? If we don't have a really hot spring going into the summer, are we obliged to open them, or can we just simply keep them shut down and save the funds, or not? Is that what Counselor Jackson was referring to? That it's a flexible timeline?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I think when the staff get them ready, within a day or two, they can activate them. I don't think that's been our practice before, as far as just watching the weather and then trying to delay it if you're having a cooler spring. I could certainly talk to our team about that. I'm not sure why that would be a problem.
That would make sense. And would it save money, is what I think we're trying to get at. If it is, if the weather isn't hot, and we don't need to open them, can we just delay it and save money? Or do you need a large amount, a long period of time to prepare?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I think we'd be prepared anyway. We would get them ready in any case. I think, without knowing a lot about this, I suspect that June 20th coinciding with the end of school, regardless of the temperature. I know for my own kids, they're pretty hearty, they're in the cold weather, and they'll play in the spray pads. So I think the start date, as it is right now, really coincides with the end of school. So, and if we were to change that, then we'd probably be looking to council to tell us, or we'd have to come back with a recommendation as to what temperature we'd want to hit for how long. So I think it may get complex if we go that route.
So this would keep it at June 20th, or earlier?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. So our current practice is to open up on June 20th. The enhancement before you is to do it earlier. These are the costs associated with doing it earlier, as a request that I think we received.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Marula.
Okay, just for the record, I did bring forward this motion, but the intent at the time, and I did research it back, it was a public health initiative. And I remember specifically in the motion, saying that it would be triggered when the heat alerts were activated, and that we should pay for it under the public health envelope, and try to obtain provincial monies. The intent was never to impact the general levy. So we're debating the issue as a Public Works item, when it should be a public health issue. And the key was to try to upload this to the province, to reverse the download, and that was part of my argument. So I think, to put clarity on that, we're debating the actual wrong intent of the motion, just for the record. So unless it's provincially funded, we should never have supported it, and nor would I probably have supported council at the time. So, because that was the intent of the motion. Thank you.
Counselor Whitehead.
Yeah, I mean, I have trouble if we're locked into a cost, and we're running a system for one day of heat, and rather target the heat day, versus just having it and absorbing that expense for the whole period. And I don't know if we can respond that quickly to the system, and I don't understand what the financial impact would be. But on heat days, do we not do something with our swim pools?
Through you, Madam Chair. For the heat alerts, yes, we have extended hours for the pools.
Okay. And can we, and certainly there are geographic areas, as has been identified, that are a little further away from pools. Would we not be able to make exception for those that have to travel greater distances to get access to the pools, and perhaps look at just putting on their systems earlier? I mean, I'm just looking for a hybrid where we can still meet the needs of the community in that two-week period, and lowering the cost. And while you're thinking about that, right now, we do a five-year averaging on our snow removal. Is that correct?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I believe it's a perpetual average we're using that right now. I'd have to confirm that.
From budget point of view. And I'm wondering if we could take a similar approach to this, because not every, the first two weeks in June aren't going to be blistering hot, or even be usable. But there may be those weeks or days that are. And the question is, if you took the approach with the reserve to average it over the five years, you might find that that costs much lower than what's been presented here today. So I'm trying to understand if there's a different model and approach that we can take.
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and forgive me, I probably don't know as much about this particular issue as I could, but I think the current practice is to open it from June 20th to September the 5th, I think. So the operating costs associated with that are pretty stable. I think they're well-understood, so we know when we need to go in there to get things ready to do it. I don't think it's ever been predicated on being driven by temperature, and I don't think we can assume as well that the people who might use a spray pad might use a pool. I think the kids who use a pool might be a little older, but again, I'd have to defer to our staff who operate these facilities.
Yeah. Well, I'm talking about us meeting our obligations to ensure that on those heat days, that there is a cooling area that people can go to. So I'm not going to do, and that then is in the hands of people who have access to those facilities. And certainly where there's greater distance, no pools, and I certainly understand and appreciate that we need maybe a different solution for those areas. But when I talk about the averaging, I'm talking about taking that, so from the end of May to June 20th, average, and you got an $87,000 impact on an annualized basis for that period of time. But not every year is going to be the same, so could we take the same approach as we take a snow removal in respect to the conditions, and pull from the reserve when you have those hot, and if it's cold, you just don't turn them on?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I could take that back. Are you suggesting that even during a day in July, if it got cooled?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Just outside the window. Just the enhanced period I'm talking about. Yeah, no, the summer's the summer. I'm just talking about that enhanced period that we're talking about, because it really has been driven by the odd day, as you've identified, in the last six years. I think we got three days, or six days, was it? In three years? Is that correct?
Three days.
Three cases in the last six years were going to justify an $87,000 annualized cost. I'm not on for six days of, I'll show you, three incidents over six years for $87,000.
I think it's longer than that.
Yeah, whoever can answer.
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I'm not sure if it's directly responsive to the question, but just something to consider for council as an approach moving forward. You know, as Dan's staff have correctly pointed out, we've had heat days earlier on in the season, and as we're talking about climate change and those sorts of issues, we're going to need to be looking at, what are the responses, and how do we better adapt to the changes in heat? I would suggest, rather than looking just at the spray pad operation at this point, just hearing the dialogue around the table, and Counselor Marula's point as well about, you know, these are about efforts to protect the public's health. There are a number of different ways that we protect the public's health as an organization, or offer those environments to them, whether they be through rec centers, the outdoor pools probably aren't open at the same time as that we're talking about, but the indoor pools are. There's other cooling centers, there's all those sorts of things. So this is one intervention in a suite of interventions that we offer around heat. What I might suggest that staff do, rather than continue to pursue this action, especially given our current economic climate, is that we step back and we take a look at the heat response plan, and look at all of the initiatives that address heat, and the effects that climate change is having in terms of earlier days of heat occurring, and what might be the most cost-effective, and most importantly, effective measures to ensure that people have cool places to go, especially in those early days when they're not yet adapted to the heat.
God bless you. Thank you.
Just on that note, Dr. Elizabeth, just on that note, and that's all well and good, and I think that the responses that you and your department have done up to this point have been really great. But the second-largest ward of this city doesn't have a pool, doesn't have a rec center. So I think that if you're going to be looking at that, I'd really like you to also look at areas that they're just not accessible. So I would really appreciate it. I still would like to vote for this, but if I don't get the support, at least I can say that I tried.
Okay. That was my last speaker. So at the moment, there's a motion on the floor, moved by Counselor Collins, seconded by Counselor Pearson, to take no action on this. All those in favor? Sorry. Counselor Jackson.
So, we're debating the motion now, right on the floor. Madam Deputy Mayor, so through you to Dr. Richardson. So if we take no action and totally then lose sight of this $87,000, I just don't want to lose sight of the issue. So I just, if I vote now to take no action on this, in light of what you said in response to Counselor Whitehead, is somebody, yourself, in conjunction with the GM of Public Works, coming back in the ensuing months into '18 with a strategy? I just need to understand that, Madam Deputy Mayor, or should we just table this and refer the amount back in light of the strategy too? Through you to Dr. Richardson, please.
Dr. Richardson.
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. You raise a good point, Counselor, because we're hard up against the end of April, and those dates do occur early in May, and it's going to take us a little bit of time to look at the whole piece. So what I would suggest is you have two options. One is you can leave it as direction to staff to take a look at this, and see what we can do for this upcoming heat season, or you could make a motion to more formally direct us to review the heat response plan, given the impacts of climate change. If it's a, I'm just being careful about staff and what they're able to accomplish in a short period of time. I think we can do a quick review that will be responsive, but I think it does deserve a more in-depth review, as Counselor Johnson has pointed out, to look more at the equity issues and those sorts of things. And that might not all be done for May 16th, if that was our first heat day.
Okay. Thanks, Dr. Richardson. So I get that the mover and seconder obviously don't want to go in the wrong direction of adding to our current budget and our tax level at this time, but I'd hate to lose sight of this amount if Dr. Richardson's strategy comes back and says, especially for this coming May and June, and we have a very, very heat alert won, early summer again, I'd hate to just lose this entire amount if we need to need some of it. That's all. So anyways, Madam Deputy Mayor, those are my comments.
Thank you. Counselor Whitehead.
Yeah, can I just ask, maybe a prudent way to go forward with the generous offer of Dr. Richardson, is that for this year, because it doesn't sound like we can do this comprehensive assessment, analysis of climate change and heat, but it certainly would be ready for the next budget session. Not one that likes tapping into reserves unnecessarily. This is probably one of those ideal situations, that there's a commitment to come back with a plan and strategy, and an absence of having that in front of us today, and dealing with this fiscal year, that we take from maybe the tax stabilization reserve, or whatever reserve you can identify, just to cover this year off, to give our staff the opportunity to find a comprehensive approach to this issue going forward. So I would suggest that. Mike, is that feasible?
So through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, if the recommendation is that referred item number seven be approved as a one-time to be funded from tax stabilization reserve for 2017, pending a report back, comprehensive report back on a heat strategy in 2017?
That would be my motion. Thank you.
Counselor Vanderbeek.
Madam Clerk.
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. There is currently a motion on the floor that you're in the process of taking a vote on. So we have to deal with this one before anything else does come forward.
Okay, that's all the speakers I have. And Counselor Whitehead, could you turn your mic off, please? Thanks. So we have a motion on the floor to take no action. All those in favor?
Carried.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Carries.
On item eight? I was a little bit puzzled by this one, because what...
So, sorry, can I then be recorded?
Excuse... It's not a point of order.
Say what?
Well, I'm still, I still have the floor. Do I, sorry, Madam Chair, do I have the floor? Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Counselor Jackson. I do have the floor.
Counselor Green, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you. With that being said, I'm a little bit confused as to why we have election items, kind of central to our democracy, before us as an enhancement.
I'm still on this issue.
It got closed.
I have a motion I want to put forward on seven. You're going at eight.
My apologies.
You need to apologize to Counselor Jackson.
I will apologize to Counselor Jackson for interrupting.
No, no.
Okay, back to the square one here. Let's go.
So the motion I was putting forward, the motion I was putting forward, is that, as Mike has stated, that for this year, we have the $87,000 come out of the stabilization fund, and give Dr. Richardson the opportunity to bring back the heat assessment by 2018. So this would be a one-time expenditure, just to accommodate this year, and then, like I said, we'll see what the comprehensive research come back. No, no, no action on an annualized expenditure. I'm not asking for an annualized expenditure. It's a different motion.
No, no. We've voted on no action on number seven.
Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk?
Can you clarify, Madam Clerk?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. They did do a vote on item seven to take no further action. It did carry. Counselors Brenda Johnson and Tom Jackson were voted as opposed. It carried.
Well, that put me as opposed too, then, because I thought I could go...
Okay, so we are moving on to item number eight, and Counselor Green has...
I'm not sure if I need to withdraw my apology, but I'll just leave that where it is. Any rate...
Let's just get on with number eight.
Through you. I'm confused why we have a budget item related to our campaigns as an enhancement to our elections. I was here yesterday. Yep.
So through you, Madam Deputy Mayor.
We're voting on it now, so I have the ability to do that.
So through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. The four-year election cycle and, if required by elections, are funded from a reserve. The cost of the elections, again, each year we contribute funding into a reserve for the cost for elections. Staff are recognizing that the cost of running the elections have escalated for a number of reasons, including regulatory requirements. And what staff are recommending, because it is a reserve, it requires council's approval, we're recommending that the annual contribution to reserve be increased by $150,000. I believe it's currently at $357,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Collins, seconded by Counselor Brenda Johnson, that this be approved. All those in favor? Any opposed? Madam Clerk.
I'm not opposed. I just need clarification. Mike, you said $150,000. What I show is $125,000. I just want clarification.
Yeah. Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. That was my mistake. $125,000.
Item number nine, fallen firefighters memorial. Counselor Marula. Moved by Counselor Collins, seconded by Counselor Marula.
Moved by me, seconded by Counselor Collins.
Okay.
But, one, as a matter of fact.
Moved by Counselor Marula, seconded by Counselor Collins. That this be approved?
Yeah. And just to give everybody the history surrounding it, it's been, started with Counselor Morelli about 10 years ago. After his death, the file was passed over to Counselor Collins and I, who have worked with the association and now the new association. We had the item at GIC. It was deferred for a period of time to allow for the firefighters to come forward. The executive came forward. He presented their case. It was unanimously supported that that, with the deferral to this budget. I can say with a great deal of confidence that, in the eyes of the association, this was approved that day after, because there was no dissenting comments, votes, or opinions. And they would be here today if they thought that this was, even remotely, being questioned. So just for the record, in their eyes, it was approved that day at GIC after their presentation. And I strongly support it, and it's before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Green.
Thank you. So as we're going through, we talk about kind of budgets being about priorities and I totally appreciate the history on this and I also appreciate how politically unpopular this might be, but I'm actually not in favor of this at this particular time. My priority has always been on other things as it relates with the enhancements that are here. And I would look to actually defer this until next year, given the impacts that we have. I did provide a courtesy to the union, or at least to the past union head who had brought this forward and it came up kind of short notice. But with the enhancements that are before us and my own personal priorities with where we go with it, I just, I can't at this time support this $125,000 expenditure. I'm not questioning its importance, but just at this particular time, I'd like to see it referred until next year.
Counselor Collins, please.
I'm very supportive of this. And this is one of those capital items. This isn't anything that has an impact on the levy, so this is a one-time cost, to be clear. It's one of the few capital enhancements that made it through the process and we kept bumping this along. So I understand, you know, that this is included on the essentially all-encompassing operating impacts, but as you'll notice there, the net impact is zero because this is a capital item. So I just want to make that clear. And, you know, we did have a full room of firefighters in their uniforms, with the union president, so I know how strongly some of our employees feel about this. It's been, as Counselor Green pointed out and Marula, you know, this is something that Counselor Morelli started probably a decade ago and it's taken us to this point to get it through the budget process into where we are today. So I'm very comfortable with what's in front of us and I feel even more comfortable with the fact that it doesn't have any impact on the tax levy.
Thank you. Counselor Pearson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor and Chair. And I really appreciate Counselor Collins jumping in on that because I was going to ask the same question. That was my recollection, understanding that it is a one-time and I'm certainly supportive of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Skelly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The $125,000, can someone speak through the chair? Can someone speak to the actual, what that is for, please?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. This is paid for a study of potential sites, the design and the construction drawings. So this isn't any of the actual capital construction costs. It's just to get to the point where we can put it out for tender.
Thank you through the chair. That's a lot of money for a study. I've, you know, I've brought this up before, but every time we do a study, it's usually $200,000, but $125,000 could build the memorial. I believe that the statue in, on Ottawa Street was, and maybe Counselor Marula can speak to that, it was about $100,000, the actual granite statue, and it's beautiful. We could build the memorial for $125,000. Why are we spending $125,000 if we know where it's going to be? What is that really going to be used for?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. This is, I think the project as envisioned is considerably more than just a statue. It's like a plaza space with flagpoles, granite seating, engraved names, lighting, planting beds, and irrigation systems as well. So it's, the project as envisioned is considerably more than just kind of a focused statue.
Through the chair, could we find the funding source? I was just, oops, asking Counselor Marula if, I know we all have funds annually, each ward has funds for public art. Is there something that we could perhaps even take from something like that for this year alone, a percentage? We're talking $125,000, less than $10,000 for each ward. Perhaps we could do it that way? I mean, you don't get public, you don't get public art? Yes, we do. Well, yes. I mean, I sat down with Ken Coit this year and he has, there's funding available for public art through this, well, could it not come from that? I'm just saying, and I'll echo what Counselor Green's saying, we're sitting here trying, we're struggling over, you know, $25,000 and $13,000 and $10,000. This is $125,000. People certainly support the concept, but it's a lot of money in this, you know, this year. If there's another, perhaps somewhere else where this money could come from, have we looked at identifying another source? Through the chair, can anyone speak to that?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I don't believe so, but I just would remind the committee that this is a capital, so as Mike pointed out, there's no net levy, other than I guess the financing strategy around the capital, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Second speaker, Counselor Collins. All right. So I have no more speakers. It's been moved by Counselor Marula, seconded by Counselor Collins, that the Fallen Fighters' Memorial Fund be approved. All those in favor?
Standing, please. All those in favor?
Okay. And those opposed? All right. That's carried. Thank you. Item 10, Hamilton's Plan for an Age-Friendly City.
Moved by Counselor Collins, seconded by Counselor Jackson. Counselor Pearson? No? It's the reverse. Counselor Jackson moves it, Counselor Collins seconds it. All those in favor? To receive. Is that it? To receive? To receive. Yeah. Okay. To receive. Getting there. Number, so, I'm sorry. Counselor Jackson?
Madam Deputy Mayor, just to be clear, since a couple of colleagues were just whispering across the floor asking me, so this is now absorbed into Acting General Manager Grace Mater's budget with Suzanne Brown as well, who's been involved. City Manager, again, thank you very much for huddling the team on this. And this will go over extremely well with both the Council on Aging, Seniors Advisory Committee, and all those groups involved with helping our city continue to be an age-friendly city. So it's absorbed in the budget that this $30,000 will continue without impacting the levy as an enhancement. Madam Deputy Mayor, through to Grace to confirm what I've said, please.
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, that is correct. It's within our budget.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Item number 11, is living wage on that? Counselor Green?
Thank you very much, Madam Deputy Mayor. And, I mean, it's of no surprise, as we've been going through this, I've been a strong proponent of a living wage. Through you, though, I, you know, I'm kind of disheartened here because the asterisk is here, but there's no rationale on the phased-in approach that would have perhaps given us some enhancement options to put out there. So through you to staff, what were some of the incremental costs, including an option for a phased-in plan for part-time? Because at this time, that's what I was looking to do, separate out the, perhaps the library, recognizing the pressures the library's under and governed by a separate board. But, you know, our crossing guards, our seniors, the folks that are having precarious work, I would very much like to prioritize those folks and find in what, find out what that phased-in approach might look like so I can move the motion here accordingly.
Are you putting a motion on the floor?
First, I'm asking for the question on the phased-in approach so that I can word my motion accordingly.
Okay. Who can answer that?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. In report CM 16020A, staff provided three options for potential, on how to implement the living wage. Option one was a phased-in approach, starting midway through 2018, with a 2018 cost impact of about $520,000, with the remainder being implemented in 2019 at an additional $520,000. So the total two-year cost impact would be about $1 million. Option two included a full implementation in 2018, but with a phase in within 2018. So a probationary rate at January 1, at about $292,000, and then at July 1, the full living wage cost. The 2018 impact would be about $800,000, and that's just because of how our seasonal workers are hired and when. So you would realize a bit of a savings by doing that. And then the final option was just an immediate full implementation with an impact of about $1.1 million in 2018. Unfortunately, we're not able to phase in through an extended period of time because that wouldn't meet the definition as provided by the living wage framework. According to the community partners, we need to be at a minimum paying $1,585 and they would accept a probationary period, but anything beyond that would not necessarily align with their definition of being a living wage employer.
But for clarity under option two, that's viable and that's an incremental step. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, I mean, that is, out of all of them, I think, the lowest possible entry into this, if I'm reading this right, is that, that's correct?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Counselor Green. So the annualized impact would still be the same under option two, but because of when we would be hiring and compensating the individuals in 2018, you would realize, you know, that $300,000 savings in 2018 only. In 2019, you would be at the full cost impact of $1.1 million.
Sure. At this time, I'd like to, I'd like to move option two, test the will of council. I've been very public and made some very, probably some unpopular decisions today on enhancements, on certain aspects, looking to find some money in this list that we have here that, you know, we have these priorities that are put up against each other. Living wage has always been one of my top priorities, right along with housing. And so at this point, I'd like to move that, seconded by Counselor Terry Whitehead.
Counselor Whitehead?
There are some of us who do not have that, so I wonder if we could get it.
I think, Madam Deputy Mayor, they were all handed to you yesterday, so you should have kept them in your ongoing budget books. But if you didn't, because I'm looking around the floor, I will read it out. Move all part-time casual staff to the probationary rates detailed in Appendix H to report CM 16020, effective January 1, 2018, and to a living wage rate effective July 1, 2018. This would render six months of savings in the initial implementation year of 2018. City of Hamilton, January 2018, the cost impact would be $223,187. Hamilton Public Library would be $69,674 for a total cost of $292,861. And then the impact for July 1 of 2018 would be City of Hamilton, $304,178. Hamilton Public Library, $195,962 for a total cost of $500,140. A total cost impact in 2018 would be $793,001.
I'll put you on the list. Okay. Are you done, Counselor Green?
Yeah, yes. I've seen that there's some questions around the table, so I'm happy to.
Okay. So can you clarify for me? You moved option two.
I moved option number two.
Seconded by Counselor Terry Whitehead.
Counselor Whitehead. So now that the motion's on the floor, Madam Deputy Mayor, I'm still on as a first-time speaker to this?
Yes.
Thank you.
So you're going to go at the end? Okay. Counselor Collins?
Yeah, I'm certainly supportive of living wage as well. And I think we all celebrated, it was many, many years ago that, in fact, Hamilton became a living wage employer. And the goal was to ensure that all full-time employees at the city were paid a living wage. And it was celebrated across the community. It made its way into the media. We had groups come in and thank the city. I recall reading at the time, CBC did a piece where two other Hamiltons in the world were advocating the same. And so, you know, we made some budget sacrifices to get us to the point to where we are today, where we are a living wage employer. And at some point in time, in the last couple of years, there was the thought that maybe we'll want to apply that to casual and part-time employees. And I'm not certain, you know, where that came from originally. That was never originally part of the plan. You can certainly go back and look at the stories and all the good things that were reported at the time when we crossed the finish line on the full-time living wage employee issue. I certainly respect the fact that other people might see fit to take us a step further. Certainly nothing wrong with advocating for that. But in light of what we have here in front of us in terms of the budget pressures, I'm not certain now's the time to gravitate further. You know, there are other things that we can do corporately, and I know that Mr. Zagarik has talked about, you know, our ongoing reliance at times, and it came up on our service delivery list that we had with, I believe it was KPMG, and that was our reliance on temp workers. And so we know that many of those people who work for temp agencies, who find temporary employment with us because we're short-staffed in certain areas, are probably not in many cases making a living wage. I'm also concerned, Madam Chairman, about the budget pressures that this caused. I mean, we're trying as best we can to ensure we're not letting people go. And I know that we've made some tough decisions this time around from a budget perspective in terms of employees who are no longer with us. But every time there is a budget pressure, like the one that's in front of us, it probably means at some point in time, someone's not in our employ, in a full-time position, in a living wage position, because we're making accommodation for those budget pressures. So I certainly don't bemoan the fact that it's in front of us and it's something that we need to discuss. I certainly don't discount the fact that it is an important issue for many people. I certainly want to thank our staff, past and present, and councils, past and present, who through many successive budgets, tried to find ways and means in which to bump up our labor rates to ensure that all full-time employees were getting paid a living wage. And so I think that is still to be celebrated. And so as I said, I can't support what's in front of us for those reasons and I appreciate the fact that you've allowed me to speak on the issue.
Thank you. Counselor Whitehead?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I second it to get on the floor because I do support the principle. I'm not sure if I support this particular option, but that's the only two options that staff gave us and I'm a bit befuddled by the fact that this can't be phased over a number of years. I don't care about the definition. It's about doing the right thing. And it suggests that not being able to spread this over three years or four years as a phase in and understanding that there'll be cost inflation or indexing issues, I'm having a real, real, I mean, I don't know who's defying and trying to box in this definition. So help me understand why we can't take this cost and meet that target over a four-year period.
Through the deputy chair, you absolutely can, Counselor. The definition comes from the Canadian Centre on Policy Alternatives. They're the national...
Counselor Whitehead?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I second it to get on the floor because I do support the principle. I'm not sure if I support this particular option, but that's the only two options that staff gave us. And I'm a bit befuddled by the fact that this can't be phased over a number of years. I don't care about the definition. It's about doing the right thing. And it suggests that not being able to spread this over three years or four years as a phase in and understanding that there'll be cost inflation or indexing issues, I'm having a real, real, I mean, I don't know who's defining and trying to box in this definition. So help me understand why we can't take this cost and, and meet that target over a four-year period.
Through the deputy chair. You're, you absolutely can, Counselor. The definition comes from the Canadian Centre on Policy Alternatives. They're the national group that is leading this particular movement. They have released the framework. And to Counselor Collins' previous comment, it has evolved over time. And, and when it first came to council, the full framework wasn't in place. It is in place now. So they are the ones who define what, what constitutes a living wage. So if council decides that they want to do a more incremental approach and set aside the definition because it's the right thing to do, you certainly are able to do that. I can, Anna can speak to what it might mean from HR perspective, but in terms of the definition, it's a Canadian Centre for Policy Alternatives definition that's embraced by the local living wage committee. That doesn't mean that you can't decide to do something beyond that.
I, I think the, the point I'm trying to make is that if we agree with the principle, but we also understand the financial pressures, then if I don't meet the exact definition and alternative, whatever the organization is, and I really do good work, I'm not being critical or acute, and I'm sure that the, the value amount is the real issue, the question is how soon can we get there to meet that, that, that standard? I, I'm quite prepared to do that, commit to that, but I'm not prepared to do that over a one-year or even a two-year period. And if that means we don't meet an absolution, at least we've made a commitment to get there, which is to me, a very strong signal of our commitment and dedication and trying to alleviate the real pressures in regards to the impacts in our community. And further to that, you know, when I turn on the television or read The Spectator or other, you know, CBC, whatever, and see organizations, private sector organizations, private sector organizations that proudly display livable wage on their windows and have, have, and we're talking small businesses here, and have actually, their temporary and part-time workers are also being paid that level of wage, it gives me a sense of pride. And I always thought that the city has a bit of a role in a community to provide leadership. I've always been concerned that it's a race to the lowest common denominator and, you know, and I've not been, I've never been a big fan of the temp services because regardless of the offset, you know, the temp services getting the, a good chunk of change, which drives the, the salary of those temp workers that come in periodically to facilitate a vacancy. And I've never been a big fan of, of that approach. I'd rather the person doing the work gets paid the value of the work that they're doing and, and no less, but that's the current system we live in. So I do have a, a challenge fundamentally, and maybe I'm going back on my labor background, but I fundamentally believe that when you lift up the living wage, then that's more money being spent in your, your economy. And I'm hoping that other individuals within the private sector will follow suit, which further expand that quality of life and that turnover in regards to local dollars being spent in our economy, which again converts into taxes and, and other things within the community and the city. So from a fundamental point of view, and I did have a long chat with Tom Cooper, in fact, I invited him into my office and, and, you know, normally I'm very hard-nosed on some of this stuff. I get it. I mean, I'm not suggesting that I get it, other people don't. I just feel that I better committed, or more committed to achieving it, but I also want to do it with some realism in respect to the tax implications in any given year. So the only way that I really would support this, moving forward and making that commitment, but I haven't seen what that, what those numbers would be, was to phase it over a four-year period. If we couldn't do that, I couldn't, I couldn't support the, the pressures we're going to create this year or next year. So is there any way of breaking that down?
Through you, Madam Chair. We, we had started to look at those numbers, so we can certainly bring them back to council. One of the challenges that we were faced with, which is, is just a reality, is they are part-time casual positions. Phasing in a living wage for an individual in that position over a three-to-four-year period typically wouldn't see them ever get to the living wage because they tend to turn over, or they don't have enough hours to make it to the next kind of rate. So we would just have to look at our policy in terms of when we promote them up to the next rate. So we can bring that information back. And then the other, the other challenge that we may face, I'm not sure, is that the living wage rate, we don't have any control over when that is reviewed. So if it's reviewed within that three-to-four-year period, then we could potentially always be playing catch-up. So the options presented were, the intent was to align with the living wage framework, with the community partners, and to be able to call ourselves a living wage employer based on that. But certainly, we can bring back a longer phase-in option.
I did indicate that for, I mean, it's not about just the employees of today, it's about the employees tomorrow and whether we eventually get to that point. So I, I really, I mean, otherwise, we have nothing, we haven't accomplished anything. So the question, to have, you know, something in your hand and showing the commitment to get there versus worrying about, oh, we should do this now and then not have anything because we do have to deal with the democratic reality here. And certainly, the, the cost pressures that the, this council has identified. In fact, we've laid off people. And that's another reality that we can't look lightly on. So in all, in that backdrop, in that context, I'm looking at a more reasonable approach that shows our commitment. And certainly, the, the temporary and part-time workers of tomorrow with the indexing, because I understand that this gets reviewed every so often, I appreciate that, but that could be built in, that we can get there. And we could say maybe perhaps in four years, that we are truly a livable wage city right across the board. I don't want to lose sight of that, and I don't want to lose this opportunity, but certainly what's before us here now concerns me because of the, the pressures. And I want to remind some of my colleagues that I think with Joanne Triel and some of the presenters made it pretty clear that, especially with millennials, and we know that we have a growing millennial population, that the type of employment that's out there is precarious, one. Two, most people working at least two jobs, in some case, three, three jobs just to make an income and sustain themselves. And they're relying more and more and more on part-time salaries. So if you can make those part-time salaries a level wage, then you're absolutely improving their quality of life. And, and that is the new reality in regards to our employment sector. So for those reasons, I think we need to make that commitment, move in the direction. I'm just not prepared to move as quick as what's before here, before us here today or certainly with this motion. And if the mover was prepared to amend it to a four-year phase-in, then I certainly would vote and support that.
I appreciate where he's going with it, and I appreciate the seconding it to get it on the floor to have the discussion, because now I get a better sense for where he's at. And I, and I also appreciate the fact that they were looking at him multi-year. At this point, where we're at now, I'm going to keep it where it is, and it can, and it can fail if that's the will of this, of this committee.
Matt, I'm sorry to bother you.
He asked me about amending the motion. So he technically still has a floor, but through you asked me a question directly. So as a mover of the motion, I'm responding. So I appreciate that, Madam Deputy Mayor. As I said, I will keep the motion as it is. We will call the question to the vote. I think for some of the folks that have been in the community organizing, this will either come to a conclusion for the work that they've done in their campaigns, or if it's revisited in future terms of council or future years, so be it with a different phased-in approach. I do recognize, though, that the city has, Madam Deputy Mayor, committed to its full-time people. But the full-time people were union people who are already getting living wage anyways. So this was for really the most vulnerable people. And, you know, your, your traffic guards, your crossing guards and so on and so forth. And so those are the people that I'm addressing today with this motion. I'm going to keep it exactly as it is.
Counsel, Counsel Whitehead, are you, have you finished? Okay, Counsel Conley? I'm sorry, Counsel Skelly?
Clerk, did you? Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of concerns and a couple of questions. My concern about passing what we see before us today is that there would be no opportunity to build in some, some rate for students. And I understand that university students have growing pressures with increased debt loads. But I also recognize, and perhaps staff can, can answer, how many actual students and teens do we have working for the city on a part-time casual basis?
Through the, through the chair. For the purposes of this report, we only included costing for positions that were not considered student positions. And I use that term as the pay equity legislation would define it. So student definitions as defined by pay equity would be for a limited term, typically the summer term. In these roles, these part-time casual roles, yes, we have a range of ages. Some of them might be teenagers at the arenas and whatnot, but they could be anyone else in any other demographic. And for the purposes of pay equity legislation, we can't pay them differently than anyone else in the same job. It's, it's equal pay for equal work concept. So from, from a legislative perspective, we wouldn't be able to differentiate a teenager working in one of these positions against, you know, a 30-year-old, for example, working in a like position.
Thank you for that. And although that sounds very noble, the reality is, it could mean that student opportunities will start to evaporate because you're not going to have the, the number of, the amount of money to hire more and more students. What concerns me is with the amount of pressure that this is going to put on our budget, we may see people working fewer hours for, and that's, you know, the same amount of money, or we may see fewer bodies, so you'll have fewer people working. And that could be the bottom line for a lot of people who use this to supplement an income or to, to help them get through, through high school. So I think that we have to be very aware of the fact that this doesn't mean that we're necessarily going to find this money somewhere in our budget. It's got to come from something. Somebody is going to pay for it, and that could mean reduced hours at the same amount of, at the same rate, but not necessarily a larger paycheck at the end of the week and fewer, and perhaps even, as we've seen, as we've been going through this budget process, layoffs because we have to live within a certain budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Brenda Johnson?
Yeah, and, and Anna, Anna, thank you. I just need a couple of questions, if you don't mind, and I hope that I'm not blindside you. What is the minimum wage rate now? So if I were to work in retail or wherever, do you know what the minimum wage is right now?
Through the chair. It's funny, I can never remember this number, but I believe that it's $11.40.
$11.40.
As of October 1st.
Do we have anybody in, under the City of Hamilton's umbrella that makes $11.40?
Yes, through the chair. There are positions included within this report in the part-time casual group that their starting rate is $11.40 in some cases.
And that's, and that's starting rate so that as they work towards and they move up tables, or is that it? They can't go any higher than the minimum wage?
I believe there is one classification where the starting rate is the only rate, so they would only ever earn $11.40.
Okay. Are crossing guards in that category, Anna?
Through the chair, no, they are not.
Okay. So concession stands that, that we've been, it's been in the background? Golf club employees, concession stands?
Through the chair. I believe they have a two-step progression, so they, they would earn $11.40 as their starting rate and then progress up to, to another rate.
To which, do you know?
I'm just trying to pull it.
And I'm assuming it's based on time?
So through the chair. For positions like the skate arena monitors, where you might see some of these younger workers that we've been chatting about, their existing step-one rate is $13.31 to start, then moving to $13.59, and then moving to $13.87. So they are currently earning above the minimum wage.
So you said they start at $13.31, but minimum wage is $11.40, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, but they can work their way up to $13.87, that's the most they can make? And this is skating monitors?
That's correct.
Okay, that's just a for instance. Okay, so crossing guards only make $11.40?
So through you, Madam Chair. The crossing guard rate, the starting rate, is $11.67, and their next rate, which is their final rate, is $12.97.
$12.97. And I see that the, the libraries are in this, and this would be a huge hit on their budgets as well. So I see Paul's up there, but Anna, if you can answer this, that's great. So we have casual employees that work for the library. Do they start off at minimum as well?
So through you, Madam Chair. The, the library positions from a pay equity perspective are matched to our CK schedule that we're talking about, to our PACE Watcher Guide. And that rate is a minimum wage rate. It's $11.40, and that's it.
And we're talking the same with the golf club employees, the concession stand, everybody's all starts at minimum wage and they work their way up except for skating monitors for some reason?
So through the chair. Because this is a salary schedule with the jobs being evaluated based on their points in the job evaluation system, they actually have different starting and maximum rates. So the PACE Watcher Guide and the library positions are the first level in that salary schedule, and they are minimum wage positions. Every level after that, which would include some of the positions like the skate arena monitors, because they have a higher job evaluation, would start a bit higher. So it's their relative worth in the job, in the job schedule. So that's why they make $13 versus the $11.40. I do want to point out to council, in order to manage the costs and to try and mitigate some of the costs, the salary schedule that we've proposed for the living wage, should we move to it, effectively flattens the salary schedule. So we're still pay equity compliant, but regardless of the job evaluation and the relative worth of those positions based on our system, they would in fact be paid the same. The other option would have been to start at $15.85 with the lowest-rated position and then layer on top of that. The costs for that were, were quite high, and we did not think that that was an option. So since this approach was still pay equity compliant, this were the, these were the options that we chose to bring before council.
And thank you, Anna. And I know that you and I need to have a talk afterwards because somebody who's a skating monitor makes more than someone who's charged of safely crossing children across the road in all kinds of weather. To me, it just, there seems to be a bit of an imbalance there. But I need to understand the skating monitors role as well. So I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah.
But when I think of a crossing guard, I know how much responsibility and what kinds of weather that they work in, so I'm just, I'm putting, I'm probably more biased. Okay, those are my questions for now.
Counsel Marula?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ideally, I would love to support this as well. I know that Counsel McCady and I, back in 2004, originally brought forward the living wage strategy, which ultimately led to the creation of the Poverty Round Table, which they, they took possession of that file, and we are where we are today. The intent of the original living wage was clearly directed and focused on our full-time permanent employees. And we looked at, we looked at it from a corporate-wide basis. We're very proud to state today that we are a living wage corporate entity for our full-time permanent employees. A lot of the part-timers are obviously, as I've mentioned before, students, and I think it's been referenced as well. And I, I think obviously it would be lovely, I would love to support it. I'd love to have a lot of things happen that we can't afford. The reality is that at present, it's not affordable, might change in the future, but we're dealing with a different target, a different target to a populace, and one that I think is more in line with subsidizing their academics or living at home with their parents, and not so much dealing with individuals that are sustaining a household. And that's minimize those challenges, but recognizing that the challenges are real, the challenges are far different than trying to sustain a household. So I, I think that when you're looking at all of our challenges, it's something we should definitely keep on the back burner, but it's something that I wouldn't consider to be on imminent pressure. And I look at, for instance, there are some of our employees that are actually obtaining the minimum wage, which is $11.20. $11.40? $11.40. And actually getting additionally, they're getting tips as well. And if they're serviced, and in some cases, they're, some of them are making $30 or $35 an hour because of the tip component. And if we isolate them, ideally, you would have to take them out of the equation for that purpose. Because in, in the restaurant industry, there's, there are two minimum wages. We don't do that at the city. So there are those individuals. So there are those individuals that are really, I think, super artificially, they're at 1140, when in reality, they're much higher. Having said that, it's something that we should definitely keep on the back burner. It's something we can definitely evaluate. I know I had asked how many of these individuals were students and so on. We didn't have that data when it was first, when it first came up at GIC. Something I would like to evaluate down the road and actually ascertain as to how many of these people, who are these people, what are they doing? Are they trying to sustain a livelihood, or are they supplementing their academics and so on? So it's a different populace altogether, and one that I'd like to ultimately support. It's just we're not at that point financially to do so. We spoke earlier about the 2.3, and how that wasn't acceptable. We, we spent a great deal of time trying to bring it to that level, and we need $3 million more off the levy in order to meet the 2% target that I think a number of us would accept, no, I would accept. But we're not going to get there in the next week or two if we add another million today. So that's the reality of the issue. I could easily support this for, for political reasons and, and just claim that I tried to help make this happen, but that would be the wrong thing to do, is to do something for political expediency rather than fiscal responsibility. And as a result, I can't support it today.
Thank you. Counselor Conley.
Thank you. Some of the things I was going to say were said by Counselor Marula, and I appreciate those things. I'd like to note some history, though. When did the, the living wage come in to Hamilton as a policy for full-time, to somebody?
So through the chair, to the counselor. In 2011, the Community Partners announced a living wage rate of 1495. So I believe that is what started some of the discussions at the City of Hamilton. At that time, our full-time employees, for the purposes of our full-time staff, we were considered a living wage employer. And then in the fall, I believe in October or November, the Community Partners then increased the living wage rate to 1585. We're still a living wage employer for our full-time staff, and this report brings the costs for bringing the part-time casual group up to that new living wage rate of 1585.
So it started in 2011, is that what I understand? I thought it was a lot older than that, but 2011?
That's correct.
Is the date? Okay. And at the time, was there any consideration of part-time and casual employees being a part of that scenario?
Through the deputy mayor, no, I don't believe that was part of the discussion in 2011.
And apparently, we were one of the first, from what I understand from other speakers. Have a lot of the other cities of comparable size gone to supporting the casual and part-time people for a living wage? To, through the chair. Do you know?
Through the deputy mayor, I believe that Guelph has a living wage rate. Now, I'm not sure if that's for part-time, and Toronto. And I, again, I think it's for their part, for their full-time.
Just full-time?
I believe so. I can double-check. But they're the only two communities in Ontario.
Wow, so we'd be the first, then, if it went through?
I believe so. I can double-check that with you, yep.
Wow. You know, for all the reasons that have been said by other, by most of the other counselors, I can't, I can't support it at this time. We are under great restraints. This is not affecting full-time people, and the full-time people are the ones, in most cases, that have families and need the extra dollars. And I think as a city, we've done our due diligence to be the best employer we can. I, I hope that we can look at this in the future, but somebody mentioned a four-year phase-in, so four years from now, let's bring it back up and see if we can phase it in then. So, but I cannot support it at this time. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Aidan Johnson.
Thank you very much, Madam Deputy Mayor. I will be supporting Counselor Green's motion for ethical reasons. And I, in this context, I differentiate ethics from politics. I, I did not have the opportunity to be part of the conversation last term of council about the living wage. I'm privileged to be part of the conversation now, and it is my ethical opinion that we have an obligation to pay an appropriate wage to all people who are employed by the City of Hamilton, whether directly or indirectly. And the relevant argument was best made by Bishop Michael Byrd, Anglican Bishop of Niagara, and by Bishop Douglas Crosby, Roman Catholic Bishop of Hamilton. They together wrote a very powerful op-ed that appeared in the February 17th edition of the Hamilton Spectator, and I would like to read out part of it. This is the part that they say better than I ever could. "We urge the City of Hamilton to pay all of its employees a living wage as part of the 2017 city budget. Paying a living wage would enhance the city's noble aspiration to be the best place to raise a child and age successfully." Earlier in the op-ed, they write the following, quote, "Of course, many will argue the budget simply won't allow for this practice to be implemented. We understand the challenges to make ends meet, but such challenges do not absolve us of our responsibility, and we must be steadfast in moving toward the vision of a society where all have enough," unquote. Thank you very much.
Sorry. Were you finished? Thank you. Counselor Maria Pearson, please.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and certainly some great comments around the table, and I'm going to jump off and say, I too have major concerns in light of all the budget items we've been dealing with in the last few days, and the huge number of issues we've had dealing with staffing and, and cuts, et cetera. I have a problem supporting this today, I'm, you know, if there's something to come forward in the future, but we are a living wage facility today with our employees, with our full-time. And it has been mentioned, and I know our, Mr. Tack was here from the library and staff, that, you know, this, anything that we do here around this table also affects and impacts the library board. And, you know, we sit, I sit on both sides of the table, and it's, it is very difficult to deal with. And I know what we've been going through over the last number of years, just with pay equity, had a huge impact on the budgets over the last number of years. And we're still kind of, I'm not just going to say it's completely off our backs, but we're still feeling those effects. So at this time, I'm, I too am very apprehensive and will say that I won't support it going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Green. Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Hold on. Sorry, you don't write that fast? Okay. Opposed? Are we standing? You want me to read? Counselor Conley, Counselor Pearson, Counselor Brenda Johnson, Counselor Tom Jackson, Counselor Terry Whitehead, Counselor Chad Collins, myself, Counselor Skelly, and Counselor Marula. So it's defeated. Counselor Whitehead?
So I move that we look at phasing in the liberal wage over a four-year period and have staff bring back the, the report and implications.
All those in favor? So phasing in over four years, we're taking the vote. Phasing in over four years. All those in favor, please stand. Counselor Aidan Johnson, Counselor Farr, Counselor Green, Counselor Whitehead. All those opposed? Counselor Conley, Counselor Pearson, Counselor Brenda Johnson, Counselor Tom Jackson, Counselor Chad Collins, myself, Counselor Skelly, and Counselor Marula. That's defeated. Okay. Okay, now we're at the end of that. Those referred items. What do we do with it now? Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Both of them were defeated, so I guess we're just receiving. Thank you.
So we're moving to receive item 11. Information only. So moved by Counselor Chad Collins, seconded by Counselor Marula. Was it, did you, was somebody over here? Okay, so I have, I've moved by Counselor Collins to receive item 11, seconded by Counselor Jackson. And now, everybody in the room, tink the glass, so give me a list. Counselor Farr, Counselor Whitehead.
Mike, can you give us a running total through you, Chair?
Counselor Farr, Counselor Whitehead, just give me one minute. Counselor Farr. Counselor Johnson? Did I miss anyone? Okay, Counselor Farr.
Right. Can I get a running total through you, Chair, from Mr. Zagar, what we've achieved here today?
We're actually voting on receiving this report right now? No.
Okay. Counselor Whitehead?
The question, but it could wait till after we receive.
Counselor Brenda Johnson?
And this is just a question, and it's regarding all the questions I was asking Anna earlier. What does it take to get the, the crossing guards even just reevaluated? Not to do anything with the pays, but just to reevaluate their jobs? I just, or any job for that matter, what does it take? Does it take something from, from council? I'm just asking that question, it can go offline. So, zack me.
I don't think that's, okay. That's not a budget issue.
My taser will be.
Okay, we're speaking to the motion to receive number 11. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed, Counselor Green. Who's tinking their glass? Counselor Farr.
Mike, can we get a running total through you, Chair?
So through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, I've noted four items as being approved, and a total $319,080, and represent an additional .7 FTE. And I should identify, one item was tabled, item number one was tabled pending Counselor Whitehead having a conversation at the Police Services Board. Sorry, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, so I've noted four items, so, and I'll go through them, just to confirm I've captured everything correctly. Item one was tabled, item two was amended and approved at $100,000. Item three was approved at $25,000. Item five was approved at $69,080. Item eight was approved at $125,000. And item nine was approved with zero net levy impact. So those items represent a total of $319,080, and the one item included .7 FTE. That, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, the naloxone.
So through you, Chair, item five, we approved yesterday, did we not? But you included it today in your total?
Yeah. Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, I'm just totaling up the referred items, and it's captured as a referred item.
Okay, thank you. And through you, Chair, then, will that affect our two, our current 2.3?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, I think it will likely push us, the budget, from 1.6 to 1.7, so the 2.3 to 2.4.
Counselor Jackson, you have a motion. Question first, I'm sorry. Counselor Whitehead, your question.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm going to try this one more time with the clerks. On number seven, there was a vote, no action. That no action pertained to the request for $87,300 on an annualized basis on our tax bill, is that correct? So when I asked if I could move a motion to have $87,000 come out of a reserve for one year so that our, our health staff can do their assessment, how is that in conflict with that motion? Because there are two separate issues. One's dealing with the, what's, number seven's dealing with the annualized expenditure. Tell me the last two words, no and action. No, 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 let's be clear, because I can tell you, I don't see the conflict. No, no action is pertaining to what's before us.
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, the committee has voted to take no action whatsoever to have the spray pads open.
No, my understanding is that what was before us is, was, is what is on the chart. They were not supportive of no action on receiving $87,300 on our operating budget. That's what's before us.
I see it as no action on number seven.
Correct.
No action on number seven.
Correct.
So we're taking no action, that means we're not doing anything.
Okay, and then I put an alternative motion forward, that we pull $87,000 out of the reserve and give Dr. Richardson an opportunity to do her assessment.
I was taking action.
That would be action.
But that's a separate motion.
And we voted to take no action. So let's move on. Counselor Jackson, you have a motion.
I'm waiting for a ruling, it's a separate motion, I don't know how you can...
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, just to clarify, first, clerks doesn't rule, we just provide advice, the Chair actually rules. It's my understanding that it is committee's intent, and if everybody here is, can hear me, then they can tell me if it's any different, that they do not wish to take any action at all with any funding on the spray pads. That's my understanding of the intent.
That's my understanding from looking around the room. So that would be my ruling.
Fair enough. I just wanted to make sure I got it absolutely clear.
All right, I understand you perfectly.
So what I challenge illegally, then I, you'll know.
Counselor Jackson, you have a motion.
Madam Deputy Mayor, I do. Thank you for recognizing me. Moved by myself, seconded by Ward 11 Counselor Brenda Johnson, that the General Manager of Public Works be directed to determine an alternative funding source for the $200,000 in order to maintain the existing HSR School Extra Service, which we had a long discussion about.
We didn't move a motion.
Right. So I was to move this in, in open session, as per the clerk's instructions, Madam Deputy Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Brenda Johnson.
Any discussion? Counselor, Counselor Aidan Johnson?
Thank you very much, Madam Deputy Mayor. I'd like to thank the mover of the motion for bringing this forward and for the good conversation that he and I have had about this topic. It is certainly the case that eliminating the bus lines that serve our student communities is, is a bad idea. McMaster University is an important part of the City of Hamilton. We know that the enrollment numbers at McMaster are increasing. We know that more students are living downtown. We know that more Hamiltonians all throughout our region are now traveling to McMaster, as I say, in greater numbers, year upon year, because more Hamiltonians are accessing post-secondary education, which is a good thing. And with those rising student enrollment numbers, we have more workers, employees at McMaster. So this is a good case of transit serving economic development and culture in our city. We've made good investments to reflect the growth in McMaster's community over the past few years, and clearly, this is not the right time to stunt that growth. So I'd like to thank again Counselor Jackson for doing the right thing by transit today, and I'm looking forward to voting for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Whitehead?
Madam Chair, I think it's important, and it behooves us, to ensure that we have quantitative numbers. Staff have made it absolutely clear that they have, we've had made significant investment, both in the McMaster through extended buses, headway frequencies and so forth, to address a lot of those challenges. No one wants buses running empty, let's be clear. But the problem is, if you don't have quantitative numbers to justify the elimination of a bus service, then it's very difficult to be sitting around this horseshoe saying, then let's get rid of it. And I think we've heard some empirical data that those buses are being, even those extra buses are being used. And in absence of, again, having that empirical data to ensure that there isn't an impact, I have no choice but to support the continuation of the service, one, and two, supporting... I have no choice but to support the continuation of the service, one, and two, supporting Counselor Jackson's motion to see if we can find that within the current HSR budget.
Yes, it was me, probably.
Counselor Green?
Just to confirm on that, that, because again... Just to confirm that in the interim, there'll be no reduced service, right? We're not going to, like, we're going to be very clear about that right now?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, the service will remain the same.
That's what I like to hear, and that's why the kudos goes to Counselor Tom Jackson on the university transit option today. Thank you, and kudos.
I have no further speakers, so I'll call a question on Counselor Jackson's motion, moved by Heaton, seconded by Counselor Brenda Johnson. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Could I have a motion to adjourn? Oh. Hold on, sorry.
I have another motion.
I'm going by my...
I have another motion, Madam Deputy Mayor. And this came out of the discussions in yesterday's budget presentations, and it was, it was addressed yesterday, but it wasn't as a motion, so I'll put it on the floor. It's moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Doug Conley, that staff be directed to offset the Ward budget indexing by $23,990 with a reduction in Legislative General Budget. Staff need this for the official record.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Pardon? Taking it out. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Now, can I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Counselor Green, seconded by Counselor Pearson. All those in favor? Have a great weekend.